Call back into order, the recess meeting from last Thursday. The 18th, welcome everybody. And my recollection is we had been working on the resolution for the plan for executive order 203. And I think we had gotten through the list of of undertakings. But I understand. Mike, you may have a proposed amendment to one of those.
I'm sorry, were you talking to me, Rich?
Actually, before we get there, I I see Brittany and Michelle, are you there? Let's see on this page.
No, Michelle's not here, Rich. I'm hosting the meeting.
Okay, do we have any public comment? It's a continuation of our last meeting, but if there's members of the public that wish to address us, I'd like to give them an opportunity to do so.
I'm not sure. We had one person that requested the link earlier today, but I've not seen that person join us, but there are others here. That I'm not sure want to speak under public comment or not.
Okay, I certainly don't want to close anybody down if they're here to speak, but I'm not sure how to ask. If if there is somebody, if you could email Kathy, Kathy Covert, our legislative clerk, and we will give you a chance when she's aware and she'll let you give you access. So, sorry for that interruption. Mike, did you wish to make in a proposed amendment? Mike Stigler?
I'm sorry, Rich, can you say that again?
Yeah, did you wish to make a proposed amendment?
I'm sure I sent it around. It was basically, I would like to see the SWAT vehicle maintained as a as a part of the police force. I don't know if it, it's pretty clear to me that it can't stay at the police department, so I would move it up to the sheriff's department and have it remain the home of of the special weapons and tactical team. Also, you know, SINT uses that as well, so I really look at that as a home for that that group. And then I would recommend we just we buy another vehicle for emergency response, which clearly is something that apparently people think that we need, we haven't had in the past. The two vehicles are just they're not the same. I mean, I know people want to think they're the same, but I just don't see them that way. I mean, if we were to have a flood, say, and we needed an emergency response to that, we would have that truck down there and it would be getting used to organize. But then, you know, there's nothing to say that we wouldn't have something going at the same time that needed the SWAT vehicle. So I really look at that as something we should do. So, fine, I don't mind making that suggestion that we that we just buy another vehicle and we fit that out for emergency response.
Do you do you have that reduced to some language or?
I did, I emailed it to you. Let me find it.
Let me see if I can find your email. And in the meantime, Deborah, why don't you?
Yeah, thanks, Rich. Well, first, let me thank Jen Owen and and the SWAT team members from the sheriff's office. Yesterday, five of us got an in-depth look at the vehicle. Insofar as Mike is suggesting that that vehicle be housed at the sheriff's department, I would certainly second that. I think because the weapons are stored on the vehicle, the vehicle is kept securely at the sheriff's department. When it's it's needed to be loaned out to another agency or used with another agency, a member of the sheriff SWAT team accompanies them and manages the vehicle. I think that it's hard to see that there's an advantage to giving it to doer. You would simply have to train someone at doer to be a member of the SWAT team, or else you would have to ship a SWAT team member over there to help with whoever's using the vehicle. I think the vehicle use serves as a valuable coordination tool for communications and chain of command when there's an emergency situation. And I think that's often needed because these emergencies require more than one agency or department. I don't understand why doer would need a vehicle of its own. I think that this vehicle may carry weapons, but mostly it carries communications equipment. Mostly it enables coordination, communication, remote viewing, radio communication. I think that's probably all stuff doer might need. But I think there's no need for a second vehicle. We rarely need the SWAT vehicle and the likelihood that we're going to have two simultaneous incidents that require what's on the vehicle are extremely small. So I would support Mike's amendment insofar as it keeps the vehicle at the sheriff's department. I'm not sure I see the need to spend money on another vehicle. So, sorry to take so long.
Okay, Anne?
Thank you. So, five of us legislators took advantage of going up to look at the vehicle 99, which they use currently for SWAT. And so I want to also put a shout out to to undersheriff Jen Owen, but specifically Lieutenant Kyle Koskinen and Deputy Matt Hasselman, who gave us a detailed tour of the vehicle and talked about what it's being used for. So what I gathered from that is it's mostly communications during a crisis or an emergency. And so I would like, I see that, I would like to see that going forward as the main use of it. Also expanding to other types of emergencies such as floods, things like that. So I don't see a need for another vehicle. I think if it's physically stored at the sheriff's department, I'm okay with that. It's close enough to Department of Emergency Response, but I think some coordination possibly from Department of Emergency Response to make sure that this vehicle is available and and for, you know, fires, for floods, for different types of emergencies. It, I know it was brought up before, possibly taking the equipment out to you to have use for other events, and there is absolutely no way when you see inside the vehicle that the the equipment is in cabinets and shelving and and the communications stuff takes up the most of the vehicle. You just can't take stuff out. It's it's that's what the vehicle is. So I would like to see it be used basically for communications, and if we need it for other emergencies, I think a little bit more better storage or more secure storage of some of the stuff that's in there, some of the equipment. And for, I would propose a name such as the Mobile Communications Center. And talking with the three sheriff's department staff, they seemed that that was possibly an idea that they might entertain there. Some of them are here on this call, so I'd like to make sure we include them in this. Thank you.
Okay, Shauna?
Thank you. I would not like to see this at the sheriff's department. I think that it would. I think the perception for our community is saying that they do not want this as a militarized vehicle. And I do understand the need for it being a mobile command center. And Annie and Deborah are right, it does serve as a communication hub and undersheriff and Matt and Kyle did mention the fact that everyone convenes in that that location inside that, call it the SWAT mobile. Whenever there's an emergency, the important thing to remember too is that the sheriff's department, I believe in the past two or three years, they've only used it three times is my understanding. So it's not being called out on site very often. The other thing is that I absolutely would never support buying a second vehicle. We're talking about taxpayer money here and these vehicles are not cheap and there's no, there's absolutely no reason for us to duplicate the vehicle that we currently have that I think whenever we need it, it does serve us. So I would not support the amendment. I prefer that it is that it stays at doer.
Okay, so Mike and then Henry and then Martha.
Well, I just, I mean, I found the resolution that I was proposing. Couple of things to say just before I get to that is I mean, by that kind of thinking that it's not used very often, we should really have just a couple of fire trucks in the city and that way those fire trucks can just be used over and over again for multiple fires because what's the chance of us really having more than one fire in the city at the same time? If I were to say that, you'd go, well, that's crazy. And I would say, well, yeah, I don't agree with that either. Listen, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, there was a standoff just last night in Keegan County where a guy was barricaded in his house and I'm thankful everybody was saved after that. And they certainly used their mobile command center. And I'm watching TV from Boulder and it would be great to say that the world is a peaceful place, but I I think that this this truck is needed. I think it's under the sheriff's department. If the sheriff's department wants to loan it out to say a flood emergency, I'm pretty sure they'll do that. But I want the sheriff's department, I'll just want the SWAT team to have priority over the truck. I don't want them going for the truck and then saying, oh, it's down there. Well, great, now we have to go get it. You know, I think that should be in control of the police department, so, or the sheriff's department. Anyway, the resolved I had, I mean, since we do think that there's a need, I that's why I put this out there, that resolved that the SWAT vehicle be moved under the purview of the sheriff's department for rebranding, but with the understanding that it will be continue as the home of the Tompkins County Ethica SWAT underneath the sheriff's department. And further resolved that a new mobile command vehicle will be purchased by the Tompkins by Tompkins County. That will be under the purview of emergency services. So I just tried to keep it simple.
So that's your motion. Do we have a second on the motion? Dave McKenna, seconds? Okay, further debate. Henry, go ahead.
Yes, I also was at the tour yesterday of the SWAT vehicle. And yes, it is, it is important, it is important for if there was a flood, the sheriff's department would also be responding to the flood too. But the real things I saw on the thing was they have a space for the equipment, which is their uniforms, their their flak jackets, their helmets and everything else. And they have a space for for their guns and space for the flash bombs and everything else. And so I asked yesterday whether they could take the guns out and they said, no, not really. But, you know, I wonder whether they could, in fact, because I mean, they're talking about getting the flak jackets or getting them in a different color. So that they're not like, they're not military looking. But I think, again, that maybe you can get a secure van and put all the equipment in that, put all the guns in that and just ride along, ride alongside of it. And again, just have a secure van and then you'd be able to shift everything else because they said that people people love to visit the the truck, that kids come up and they play in it and everything else. And so they they fought back a little bit about the community saying it causes trauma. But again, I think if you if you, you know, remove all the militaristic stuff, it would be fine. And so I'm going to not support the motion because I think it should be at door. And and door does not have, they're talking about building a second, a second dispatch center, but they don't have one yet. And they're going to do it in Cornell, we don't know when they're going to have it. And so this would be sort of a half a unit for them to basically set up someplace instead of conversations. Now, they say they're going to have to change technology because it's old, but again, I would see that as being a door thing and that they could, they could easily, you know, connect when they need to.
Okay. I know this is legislators debate at this point, but I see Belisa Gonzalez is with us and she actually took a lot of the input regarding the vehicle and all and lots of other subjects, and she may have factual information to give us. So I'd like to give her just a moment to share. Belisa?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. So I just, I really just want to bring to the floor our findings on this topic of the SWAT truck from the targeted focus groups and, you know, I I understand and I hear that there was a little bit of pushback from the folks who are giving the tour. You know, about the community response, but it was an overwhelming negative response to the SWAT truck and there is, there's lots of research in this area to suggest that physical monuments of which a SWAT truck would sort of fit into the category can produce trauma and, you know, has a militarized presence regardless of what the what the the truck is actually used for, what's real in our minds is real in its consequences. And so, you know, this is, I think this is not only an example of where the community is pretty clear in this in this regard. And, you know, and so to to say that we're going to keep this is to say quite literally that we either don't believe the folks when they say that they're traumatized by this, the presence of this truck, or that something else is taking precedence over that. I'll stop just short of saying, and I don't think anybody on this call doesn't care. But rather that, you know, there's something preventing us from really putting the the needs and the experiences of the community members, targeted community members, members who have lots of you know, daily, you know, interaction with law enforcement, right? I actually think the presence is making this their their work harder, right? And so just to sort of bring that to the forefront of of people's minds and the fact that children will go visit the truck, I don't think is the counterpoint to that. And I'll I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, Martha, you're up.
Thank you very much, Rich. I I want to ask Dr. Gonzalez and maybe Jason a couple of questions and then I would, I think I'd have a comment. Whichever one of you wants to answer, I assume that the focus groups, not whether it's the working groups or whichever structure, the whole, the folks who are talking about who came up with the plan, who came up with this recommendation, I, I, did you consider the recommendation is to move it to doer? Did you consider moving it to the sheriff's office? And if so, why, why did you choose doer instead? Whichever one of you can say.
Yeah, Jason?
Sure, I can talk a little bit. There was a discussion, at least in discussions I had about moving it to the sheriff's office. It was moving it to doer because of much of what Dr. Gonzalez had mentioned. And it's a communications tool. I've said this before, it's a, it's an asset, a communications asset, not an an immediate response tool. So from that perspective, the asset being available in the community was was important, I think, and putting it in under doers, you know, doers authority and control still makes it allowable for different types of responses.
Okay.
So it doesn't preclude the sheriff's office from using it?
Correct.
So what difference would it make to? And I guess I don't know. Maybe, I don't know if this is a Derek question, sheriff question, but if the sheriff's office can use it when they have an appropriate incident, what difference does it make if it's in the sheriff's office versus doer?
I see that Jen Owen has her hand up. Maybe she wants to try to answer that?
Or Derek unmuted him.
Yeah, I'll let I'll let Derek answer that. I just had a comment. I just wanted to clarify something, but Derek, if you want to go ahead and answer that question first.
So what the question is, well, what's, what difference would it make if you're allowed to call it out and use it for a sheriff's, for your law enforcement purposes? Why do you care whether it's a doer or your office?
I don't care, Martha, where it's physically housed. I care about who maintains control over that vehicle. And like I stated at the last public safety meeting, yes, we don't use it a lot in the county, but when we need it, we need it. And I want to make sure that, or I would want to make sure that nothing is going to interfere from us getting that when we need it. And if it's used somewhere out of commission because of that, and we happen to have something happen at the same time, I think that'd be very detrimental to us.
Okay, all right, Amanda, oh.
Rich, if I, so my comment then is if the data I've seen and I've asked for more data than I've gotten, like what actually has it been used for, what kind of incidents? It's kind of less than one a month over the last number of years. So the idea that we not only would need, that the sheriff's office needs it there to always have it available. It just hard, it it seems so unusual that it would conflict with, you know, a flood or a fire or one of the lawn, one of the doer kinds of responses that 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 would be a problem. And number two, I surely don't think we need two of them. So I I support the idea of, you know, I, you know, I'm listening, but I don't see any justification that says we need to ignore what Dr. Gonzalez said and what what the community members said. That has real meaning. That's absolutely important. And I don't see any reason to count reveal what that imperative.
Okay, Amanda?
Thanks, Rich. I I had a sort of similar thought and question and it's also hard for me to imagine that if there's a flood and this vehicle is sent out to be the command communication center, that it will be there on the scene and at like, it's hard to imagine that there would be another incident at the same time when everyone's, you know, if all the law enforcement in the area is going to this flood, then that that's where the vehicle is going to be. But I guess I don't know if there's any other input, Jason, or me, I see Jessica Verfus is here. And if there's any other, like, would it be used for other things besides an emergency response? I mean, I I don't understand like what, like if if the SWAT team would still be active, they would still be able to use it in those instances. Would it be anything different at doer is my question? It sounds like not.
No, I think the only, the only difference, it would be used as more of a communications mobile command vehicle. And to be able to run, manage the incident out of using the ICS format, which is what we do, Incident Command System. The only difference being is the weapons that are stored on it. If I, I think, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, that the idea behind moving it to doer, the weapons would end up being taken off of that because of the way it's stored here.
Yes, that's correct.
So so that would be the, that would be the downfall to law enforcement.
Gotcha, okay.
They would absolutely still have use of it, but they would have to find some other way to get their weapons and perhaps some of the other equipment that they would need to a response that SWAT would go to.
Okay, that that makes sense. And just to also throw in my two cents, I definitely, definitely think it needs to be rebranded. And I definitely don't think we need two of them. And I think we're also like, we also still have the the sort of basic question that we seem to be skipping over is that do we even want to take this over from the city? Like, that, that's like, the city wants to get rid of it, and I guess it's obvious that, you know, we should take it over, but that's still a question that we have to answer. Do we even want it? So putting that out there. Thanks.
All right, I think, let's see, Mike, Deborah, and then I was going to take a turn. So Mike?
All right, I mean, this will be.
Jennifer, sorry, Jennifer, jump in.
Do you want me to go now or?
Yes, please.
Um, I just wanted to take a moment to to clarify Henry's comment that there was pushback about the comment there was trauma. By no means would we ever discount anyone's negative experience with law enforcement. That's not what was said and that's not what we were trying to portray. We're just getting contradictory information from from both sides and we want to listen to both sides. It's it's the number one requested vehicle for community engagement efforts, which which I think is important to highlight. And as it was sitting on our curve before the legislators showed up, which I appreciate, we actually had two people on separate occasions pull in and ask if they could get a tour because, you know, they had never been through it, which was and after they did, they're like, wow, this is nothing like what I expected, you know, so that's where the comments came. By no means would we ever discount people's negative experiences or thoughts. It's just, I think there's a lack of of knowledge of what actually the the vehicle is. And because of COVID, we haven't been able to get the vehicle out to these community engagement efforts. And I think that's really hurt over the last year and a half. So so that's where it came from. By no means are we discarding trauma that it's caused or discounting anyone's negative experiences.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that up because I know how hard the sheriff's department has worked on its policies and procedures, really behind the scenes, but trying to make sure we are, as a county, addressing these issues already. So, thank you. Mike?
I mean, actually, Jen beat me to what I was going to say too. Listen, I don't, I appreciate what people in the community are saying about this this vehicle, but I also know there's a fundamental misunderstanding of what this vehicle is. If you were to ask most of these people, they'll bring up that case where Katie and the house was knocked down. And it's my understanding that was state police. How do I know that? Well, we don't have a little mini tank that goes and knocks houses down. That's that's the state police. So my two questions, I guess, for the sheriff, Jen or Derek is, you know, to me, this is, this is a knock to SWAT and I don't know, will SWAT still be active? I don't know. Are the members there going to keep? I mean, we need those people to want to do it. And I don't know, will SWAT still be an active thing in the community? And also, when this first came up, this move, I mean, I've been speaking against this move for like a couple of months now. So when it first came up, I was told the city and the county had asked the sheriff's department and the city police, what was the backup plan? If this happened, then what would, what would the plan be going forward? And I don't remember really ever hearing what that plan would be, so.
Okay, Deborah?
Yeah, I mean, there is a lot of misperception in the community about what the vehicle is and what it does. But I would say in response to Dr. Gonzalez's point, if we were going to take this to its logical extreme, the fact that the vehicle is kind of a focus point for people's trauma and and aversion to the police department, we would not have the vehicle at all. And it's simply too useful in those few instances when it's needed to get rid of it entirely. So we're looking for a way to rebrand it. And we're still going to have it, it's just going to be rebranded. I don't think that community perception is going to be swayed much one way or another by where it's physically housed when it's not being used. I I just, I guess, after spending so much of my career in various aspects of law and regulatory enforcement, I just think that in those few instances, when you need something like this, you need it fast. And the more it segmented the responses in terms of mobilizing this thing and getting it on the road, the more valuable time you lose. And and that's why I feel strongly that it should be housed at the sheriff's department.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. I I would, with the committee's permission, take a, take a turn as a speaker. I think it's very important to preserve the emergency response capability that the vehicle provides. I also agree completely that we need to do rebranding. And I think we do need to emphasize the other side of it, which is the Critical Incident Negotiation Team, where this vehicle has successfully been used to help with situations where people could have been hurt. And having the response capability right there and the coordination has enabled mental health and the sheriff's department and the city police to address these situations where we haven't seen real tragedies occur. It's a really useful tool. We need it. I'm perfectly happy to have it at doer. But what I want to make sure is that there is a protocol, and I think this is part of what comes next, that there is a protocol to get it where it needs to be for use by the sheriff or another agency that needs it as quickly as possible and as effectively as possible. I think we can do that. I'm not sure at this point. at this point, we need a second vehicle, possibly, but I think that's a decision for another day. I think today, we just need to know that we can, we can plan for this and we can get where we need to go. I'll stop talking there, and I think, Dan, you're up.
Thank you. Um, first thing I'd like to say is that, um, yeah, it seems to me that the amount of trauma that this vehicle may cause is not going to lessen if it's parked at Duer than if it's at the sheriff's department, um, and, and would be continued to be used by the sheriff's department. And the trauma is exactly the same. And so, I think it should be at the sheriff's department where it is most useful for its primary function, which is responding to police emergencies. Regarding the resolution itself, I'd like to propose an amendment that, um, for the further resolved, that we consider purchasing a new mobile command vehicle. So, that would maybe, uh, because I, I have heard a bunch of people say that we, we shouldn't get a second vehicle, which I agree with. So, if we said we could consider that, that takes the pressure off. Um, if you vote in favor of this, you're not actually voting for a second vehicle. Thank you.
I accept your amendment, Dan.
Okay. All right.
Is Dan on the committee?
No.
No. He is not. So, we probably should have somebody on the committee move in second. Does somebody on the committee wish to make that motion? Glenn, Glenn moved. Do we have a second? Dave McKenna, seconds. Okay.
Rich, Rich, is that amending Mike Sigler's?
It is.
Motion? Okay.
Yes, yes.
And who was, and who was the second? I'm sorry.
Uh, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, we have an amendment to the amendment. Um, I, but I already saw hands raised. I, I would assume we could speak to this in order. I think I have, I have Jason, Leslyn, and then Ann. And I, I may be wrong on the order, but let's just go that way. Jason?
Now, I just, um, I just wanted to clarify, I, and I, and I, I, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I think we need to be practical. Um, and I'm not gonna duplicate what Dr. Gonzalez said, because I think that speaks for itself. I think the multi-use of the, of the vehicle is not going to be achieved if it's, if it's under the sheriff's office. Um, just to be candid, if, if the storing of weapons and equipment is gonna be in the vehicle, it's not going to be removed timely. Um, there's a question also about storage of weapons in the vehicle. That's the best practice or not, but that's another discussion for another time, whether it requires more security, more, more facilities. The reason I bring that up is that I think it's not an either-or proposition, um, in terms of having it multi-use both ways, just my personal opinion. Um, I will say that, as we were discussing alternatives to this vehicle, um, with the sheriff and the police chief, you know, there was accommodations or alternatives being made about being able to store the equipment in trailers that could easily get them to the scene. So, um, that was asked about how that would happen. I just wanted to say that was part of the conversation that took place, um, where they were looking at buying trailers that would be able to store the equipment to be able to get them to the scene. So, um, that's all I just wanted to add, based on those two questions that were brought up.
Okay, Leslyn?
Thank you, Rich. I'm not on the committee, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. I find this conversation very interesting, um, in several ways, and, you know, regardless of the level or extent, or how we characterize people's trauma at this vehicle or not, there's an issue with it for the community, period. I have been in this vehicle so many times. I've been from the start of SWAT, from the days of Mike Padula on. So, before anybody discount me as just being the passionate black woman who's talking about this issue, because it matters to me, let me just be clear. When a community pushed back against this vehicle, I would have it at the GAC festivals every year, every year. And the community would meet with me afterwards and rip me a new one, because I thought it was the coolest vehicle ever. And yes, there were children who would go in and, you know, um, play on the electronic board in there. We all would have tours. I've, I've traveled in it. So, I, no, but this community, and particularly the community of color, and other marginalized groups, find this vehicle to be a source of trauma and concern and way too militarized. Personally, I like the SWAT vehicle. Professionally, and as a member of the community who's concerned about it, I don't. And so, I think of, why are we taking it from the city of Ithaca? If we don't care where it is housed, why is it moving from the city of Ithaca then? Why doesn't it just stay there? And since the sheriff's department doesn't use it, but once every, I don't know how often the sheriff said, why don't we just keep doing what we're doing? If we're not continuing to do what we're doing, it's because we've heard something the community said. So, moving it from one law enforcement agency to another law enforcement agency, primarily law enforcement, uniformed officers, doesn't answer what a community has been asking for. Moving it to Duer doesn't do it. Community has said it needs to go. Frankly, we're seeing that it is good for mobile command, and I agree with that. When I had the opportunity to be on the SWAT vehicle, when Sean Greenwood was shot, I saw how it was used as a mobile command center. I know its value. Well, what it begins to feel like if we're just moving it from one location to another, moving it from the visibility of downtown and hiding it someplace else, but we're using it for the same thing, is just telling the community, essentially, which none of you here are saying, that we don't care what you say or what you feel. That's what I'm hearing. I told the community, I don't care what you say and what you feel, when I brought it back year after year to the GAC festival. I did that. And it felt real crappy and feels real crappy to me right now to even admit that. But if that's what we're doing, we're telling the community the same thing. And so, I question this, th- this, um, recommendation for our proposal in reimagining public safety. If we're reimagining, we're just moving it and letting it continue to do the same thing. That doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, Leslyn. Uh, Ann?
Thank you. So, um, I, I appreciate everybody's, uh, thoughts and, uh, just, just the, just the whole discussion on this, and especially, uh, uh, Le- Leslyn and Dr. Gonzalez, you know, reminding us about the public, and this is why we're doing this, for the protection of our, our public and, um, and especially the marginalized groups. So, hearing that the sheriff has said in this meeting, if I'm hearing correctly, that it's okay if it's, if the vehicle is at Department of Emergency Response, I question why we have legislators saying, no, I want it back at the sheriff's department, when the sheriff, they're saying it's okay, it's at Department of Emergency Response. And that, uh, then we're doing what the public is asking us to do. And also, if they're, getting the equipment out of there, you know, hearing this again is very helpful to me. So, figuring out how to get the, the militarized tactical equipment out of there, uh, seems like something that we should definitely look into then and, or figure out how to do and, and repurpose this as a mobile communications center. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I see we're at 411. We do have more stuff to do today, but let's, let's finish this up if we can. Mike?
I'll be quick. I'm sorry. Um, I wasn't gonna speak again, but I'm the most outspoken there, I guess, on this one side. Listen, it doesn't matter where it's physically housed. That's not what the debate is about. The debate is under whose control the vehicle is under, whether it be under the sheriff's control, or if it's under Duer's control. I want it under the sheriff's control. I don't think he cares if he has to go an extra, you know, 500 feet to get the vehicle, I think. But I want him to have first say over where it goes. Um, and secondly, listen, I look at my job here as a two-pronged job. The community is essential, right? We serve the community. But I also serve the people we work, that work for us. I cannot express to you how much anger I had when people spray painted pigs on the freaking IPD building. And I heard very little from elected officials on pushback on how wrong that was. That would have been unacceptable if that had happened at the county clerk's office. If, if somebody had written something like that on the building. We would have been out in force saying, that's unacceptable. And the public on that needs to be held to account as well, because that is unacceptable. And this is the problem, like, this is the problem I'm having with this, is that, yes, I understand, I serve 7,500 people, and then I serve the entire county of 120,000 or 102,000 people. But I also have people, 700, that work for us. And we may not look at the sheriff's department like that, like the deputies like that, but I do. Some of these are my constituents. And I gotta tell you, yeah, they've been taking it for the last year, and they're not feeling a whole lot of support. And the IPD is certainly not feeling a lot of support. It's worse down there. So, listen, I get it. I understand that we want to do this reimagining, but it seems like we've forgotten that whole side of the equation, that these are our people, and we need to take care of our people. So, I'm just gonna end in with that, and, and, you know, people seem pretty sad with what they wanted to do, so.
Thanks, Mike. Martha?
Uh, sorry, I have to follow that. I, I, I agree, we need to support our staff, but this is a, this is a different animal. It really is. This is a different climate, it's a different universe, and everybody, everybody needs to see things afresh. Um, I just wanna go back to the resolution itself. If I go to the, uh, resolution in the packet. So, Leslyn, I hear you, number, it's recommendation number 13, or undertaking number 13, repurpose SWAT mobile command vehicle to Tompkins County Department of Emergency Response, and develop policies for the use of the mobile command center. So, it sounds like if you had your druthers, you would just not repurpose it, it would just be sold, then it would go to some other community or whatever, or just be decommissioned, and we wouldn't have something like that. If that's-
Yeah, Martha?
Yeah.
I, I agree. That seems to be what Leslyn was speaking to, but that's not either the amendment or the amendment to the amendment that we have on the floor.
Okay.
We're actually going to vote on Dan's proposal to change it to evaluate the purchase of a second vehicle. Is that, that's our first vote, and then Mike's resolution, if it survives, is underneath that.
All right. I guess I'm just trying to, to figure out sort of where the, what the endpoint is. Um, all right. Well, I guess I've already said that I would certainly not consider a second vehicle at all, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see, we have more raised hands, but Leslyn, I think you're up.
I think you. I was just gonna ask Martha, um, you know, sorry, you misinterpreted what I said. You know, I said personally, I like the SWAT vehicle. That is not what the community said. That is not what the people who, you know, find this to be intimidating and troubling and traumatizing, that is not what they said. So, regardless, I, speaking to the amendment, I will not support either.
Okay. Right. Um, Amanda?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, we're not all voting on this right now. Only the committee is gonna vote on it. So, um, when it gets to the full legislature, I am gonna make an amendment to take this particular recommendation out. And I think that we should have a, a longer conversation about this else, elsewhere, because I just don't think that moving it from, as Leslyn said, moving it from one law enforcement to another really, um, goes to the underlying point of, um, what the executive order is about. So, and the last thing I want to say, because somebody's gotta say it, um, Mike, to your point that police have been taking it the past couple years, yeah, too bad for them. People have, of color have been taking it for centuries. So, you know, everybody's gotta take it at some point.
Perhaps, I guess. Henry?
Yes, I want to apologize, Jen, all in that if I missed, uh, misstated, you know, position in terms of the quote-unquote pushback, I just used the term. Also, I wanted to say that I don't believe by, looking into buying another vehicle. I mean, we're looking into buying a, a mobile crisis unit. That makes, that might make sense, though, you know, because I know, like, Rochester has a mobile crisis unit. But again, I don't think it makes sense for us to look into buying one, you know, right now. We're trying to build a second unit at Cornell. Um, I don't think that we could, you know, that we can just move on from this position. I mean, I looked at the appendix two today, and I noticed there were lots of things that, that made it to the appendix two, but not addressed by 19 recommendations, which we're gonna bring up next week. But again, you know, I think we should just move on.
Okay. All right, we gotta wrap up, guys, if we can. Shawna, and then Ann? Maybe we can get to a vote?
Sorry. I have a process question as far as if I wanted to make an amendment. Um, should I do that now, Rich, or are we gonna vote on the other two amendments?
Let's get these amendments out of the way, and then I'd be happy to hear you from you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ann?
I, um, want to, um, respond. After Amanda, our legislator champion, said that people of color have been taking it for centuries, and Rich, it appeared that you laughed at that statement and said, perhaps. So, um, I, I didn't take it very well. If you have an explanation you'd like to say, it felt very disrespectful to people of color.
Sure, sure. I laughed because implicit in there was that everybody has to take it, and I don't think we have to punish everybody. That's why I laughed, Ann. I didn't mean any disrespect other than that. I think that logically, that's not true, that we all have to take it. We don't need to do this to ourselves or to each other. Does that make sense? I, I didn't mean any disrespect.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, we're at Dan's amendment to the amendment. And, um, Dan, perhaps you could read your amendment again, so everybody understands it?
Technically not my amendment, because I'm not on the committee, but-
Okay, put the language, please.
Further, and be it further resolved, that a new mobile command vehicle? I don't have the exact language, I'm sorry. Uh, I was just putting the word could in there. I, somebody else said the word evaluate. That would be a, that would be a good word, too, that we evaluate the purchase of a new mobile command vehicle.
All right. Uh, evaluate the purchase of a new, okay, mobile command vehicle. All right, that's the language before the committee. Um, are we ready to vote? And I'll call in order that I see on the screen at this moment. Shawna?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
I was, I didn't think we'd be allowed to vote. Um-
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're not on the committee. You were on the committee. My mistake, seeing so many faces. Uh, Glenn?
Yes.
And where's Henry?
Yeah, no.
Right. And I think I'm going to vote, um, I'm gonna vote yes, so we can consider this with more flexibility, the, the main motion. And with my vote, I believe it passes. So, the language would then read, resolve that the SWAT vehicle be moved under the purview of the sheriff's department for rebranding, but with the understanding it will continue as the home of the TC Ithaca SWAT, and further resolved that a new mobile command vehicle will, we will evaluate the purchase of a new mobile command vehicle by Tompkins- by Tompkins County, that will be under the purview of emergency services." So that's the main motion as it sits. Any further discussion? Mike?
I'm good. Thank you for giving me so much time. I appreciate that, Rich.
Okay. Can I call the vote? Deborah? Go ahead.
Just, just one thing. When it goes forward to the legislature, if it goes forward to the legislature, I think it would be helpful if we defined what we meant by putting a vehicle under the purview of one department or another. Because I've heard people say, "Well, the sheriff said it didn't matter, you know, where it was, as long as he had control over it." And I think that what we're really talking about is not so much where this thing physically lives, but who has the immediate authority to mobilize it.
I, I think you're right, Deborah.
Yeah.
Really, the devil is in the detail of the protocol for call-out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm done.
Mike, did you have more? Oh, your hand was up. Dave, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just put it up. I would say that it should be under the Sheriff's Department if it's gonna remain with weapons on it and so on and so forth. In an alternate command vehicle would be at Dewar. The reason being obvious, the safety of the equipment. And the fact that at the sheriff's office is liable to stay there rather than in Dewar's parking lot. So that's my opinion.
Okay. I'm gonna take a turn. I think that if we have it at Dewar, we are gonna have to consider an additional expense that we want the capability for the sheriff to have a trailer or a van or some other secure movable vehicle to, to transport the specialized gear for the sheriff's department. So just, we need to keep in mind that there would be that expense down the line. Martha?
Yeah, that was kind of my question. So Jason, was that what, what the intention was in, in this?
I think IPD was looking at buying a trailer to store the SWAT equipment. It wasn't an expense that we had talked about sharing with them. It was something they were going to purchase in order to store the equipment.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on the, on Mike's amendment? Before us, as amended by Dan's language? Okay, I'll call the roll. So actually, why don't we read it one more time? Mike, do you want to read it?
No, just a point of order. Didn't Dan's amendment already pass? I thought it passed with your thing.
Right, so it's gonna be part of the language to be voted on now in the main amendment.
Gotcha. Okay.
I can try reading it again.
That would be great.
"Resolve that the SWAT vehicle be moved under the purview of the Sheriff's Department for rebranding, but with the understanding that it will continue as the home of TC Ithaca SWAT, and further resolved that the, that we will evaluate the purchase of a new mobile command vehicle that will be under the purview of emergency services." So that's what we're gonna be voting on. Leslyn?
Thank you. With this new amendment, I wonder if you, Rich, or someone else can explain to me how this is responding to what the community has asked for? How is that meeting that?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I think I'm going to vote against the amendment. But if somebody, I think Mike has spoken in favor of it, and others may wish to do that.
Or maybe the sheriff or under sheriff who are on this call or any other law enforcement can answer how that is responding to what the community has requested or asked for, or begged for.
Okay. Anybody want to respond to that? Mike?
I would say that it would respond in the fact that the communities are not homogeneous. That's the community in the city of Ithaca does not want this SWAT vehicle, and we are removing it from the city. And that the county has a responsibility to everyone in the county, not just, not just the folks in the city. And if the city doesn't choose to offer this service anymore, I still believe it's a needed service. So people, you know, outside the city need the service. And if the city needs it, obviously, we'll supply that service, just as we do right now. If the Ithaca Police Department didn't want to enforce mask protocols, the Sheriff's Department did that, because we step up for that. If the Sheriff's Department needs help investigating, or if the Ithaca Police Department needs help investigating cases, as it does now, our Sheriff's Department has been there to help them, because those folks are county taxpayers as well. So if the, if the city needs SWAT to attend to certain measures, I believe the county will be there for that. And so while I understand what the, the city, the city folks, the city community is asking for, I still believe it's a needed service, so.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Rich, if I may, just edit my, my question just a minute, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the community that is identified specifically in Executive Order 203. How is that meeting, what that community has asked for, is responding to when it comes to SWAT?
Okay.
Appreciate your comments, your response, Mike.
Dave, I saw your hand up.
Yeah. It's not gonna answer Leslyn's latest statement, but the previous one. Jason just got done saying that all the city of Ithaca was gonna do was take the equipment off the SWAT vehicle and put it in the trailer someplace. So they're not responding either, as far as I can see. That's all I got.
All right, Martha?
So if the city, if the recommendation goes through as is in the report, the city would have a trailer with the SWAT weapons. Dewar has the truck repainted as a, and it's a communications center. Is there, is there equipment that the Sheriff's Office independently controls or wants to use or, or has that's now in the, in T-99 that would also need a trailer, or is, or is all the, like, SWAT equipment the city's? And they would have the trailer for it?
Derek?
Yeah, Martha, we, we both have equipment in there because it's a joint team. And I just got to say, again, I understand what some members of our community are saying about this command vehicle. I just, at the end of the day, also have to be able to do my job, and I need to be able to get that there as quick as I can. And I think it's actually helped a lot of people. And we're talking about trailers. That is something we've talked about in the past, putting this up. You guys all know I have three, four deputies on the road. I can't send one in an emergency to drive the bus, another one to go hook up trailers and do all that. Logistically, it's gonna turn into a nightmare. I am open to rebranding the team. I'm opening, open to changing the design of the bus. I'm open to where it's stored. I'm open to drafting policy as to how this vehicle will be implemented and when it should be implemented and when it should not. But I still, at the end of the day, I think it needs to stay under law enforcement control. That's what it was designed for. That's what the intent of it was, and that's where it's most useful.
Stay under law enforcement control and have law enforcement's weapons on the truck?
Yes.
So my understanding is it's not like a fire truck, the first vehicle that gets to a scene. Is that right?
No, I mean, we're not driving the bus around during the county during our regular patrol efforts. No, of course not.
And you don't, you don't usually drive, you wouldn't drive it at 90 miles an hour because you're responding to a car, to a call with your siren on.
If we needed that vehicle, we would get it there quickly, if that's what you're asking. Yes, I don't believe it has sirens on it at May. But we need the ability to have all our stuff ready to go and get it there as quick as possible.
Okay. Anne?
Can I, can I call the question, Rich?
We have hands already raised, so I need to let them speak. Jen and Anne? So Anne, go ahead.
So I, I, maybe I misunderstood this. It's, it sounded like Sheriff Osborne, you, I thought you were okay about this being under the purview of Department of Emergency Response, so I just wanted you to correct me. It sounds like you're, you're not. You'd be okay if it was housed there, but you want it under the, the purview of the Sheriff's Department?
Correct.
Okay, so then, to me, there wouldn't be any reason to house it at Department of Emergency Response if it was still just for law enforcement use. So we do have a, a big issue here of trying to figure this out. Thank you.
Okay. Jen?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer Leslyn's question as, as best as I can. I just want to remind people, folks, that this wasn't mine or Derek's recommendation. So as far as how it answers Executive 203, I would ask Jason to answer that question. We're simply trying to work and, and answer the best way to fulfill or implement this recommendation. And I, I do tend to agree with you, Leslyn, that I think it sounds like there just needs to be a general decision made if, if SWAT is something that we're committed to keeping here. That's what it sounds like to me. We're committed to making this recommendation work and get it implemented with the county ledge that, that best serves all of our community. But I would just remind you that we're not the ones who drafted this recommendation. So as far as how it answers Executive 203, I would ask that Jason answer that.
I'd be happy to. And I can't speak to the amendment, because that's not what we put forward. We put forward this to keep the asset available for broader use in the community. We took it out of law enforcement's jurisdiction and authority primarily because of the response that the community had towards the vehicle. Plain and simple. That was the reason why it was, why it was proposed to go to Dewar and not to the Sheriff's Office. So from that perspective, I do think that if it's shifted from one law enforcement agency to the next, you, you, it's, it's, it's not addressing the issues on why the recommendation came forward. I think it's somewhat disingenuous, to be honest with you. If that's the case, I would, I would say, I would say two things also. I don't know that the city would transfer the asset to us if it were to go to the Sheriff's Office, because that's not what the intent of the recommendation was, was put out to be. So to answer that question, that's why it was shifted to Dewar, because it's an asset from a communications perspective.
Sorry, I was muted. Shawna, I see your hand, but Henry has called the question. Henry, do you want to allow Shawna to just make her last statement? We'll call the vote.
Sure.
Thanks, Henry. So I'll make this quick. I, whenever we bring this to the full legislature, I will be asking us to remove the SWAT mobile from our jurisdiction, and it could go back to the city if it wants. But I don't think this should be a county function. So I will not do it in this meeting, Rich, but I just wanted to give my colleagues the heads up that I will be doing it whenever it moves to the full ledge.
Okay. Let me call the vote. Let's see, Dave?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Shawna?
Rich, I just want to clarify. This is for Mike Sigler's amendment?
Correct.
No.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'm gonna vote no. So the amendment does not pass. But thank you, everybody, for a very spirited discussion on this issue, and it sure sounds like we're gonna revisit it as a full legislature, and everybody will get a chance to weigh in. I believe, if we can keep moving, there were some questions or proposals on the resolves in the resolution. Did anybody have questions or comments on process or the resolves? Anne Corman?
Can you, just for, for clarification and transparency for the public, could you go back and read the resolution, or the, I guess it was a resolve that this spoke to, so that people know how it was, how it was left?
All right, the current language is as it is in the draft resolution. Number 13, County and City Repurpose SWAT Mobile Command Vehicle to Tompkins County Department of Emergency Response and Develop Policies for Use of the Mobile Command Center.
Thank you very much.
Leslyn?
Thank you, Rich. I have, it, it's, maybe it's a semantics question here. So in reading the resolves, the, the, whereas is all speak to the recommendations in the report. The resolve speaks of plans that the legislature ratifies the following plans. I did not think that these were plans. I thought that they were recommendations, and there's still work to be done later on coming up with an actual plan. Am I wrong in that?
I think it is semantics, and I think you are wrong. As I read it, the, the draft report made recommendations. We have renamed them as undertakings. But in essence, you're absolutely correct. This is a waypoint on a journey, if I could put it that way, that this is not the destination, but we need to submit a plan to New York State. That's what they've asked us to do. So we are saying these undertakings consist, that, that's our plan. Our plan consists of these undertakings. How we develop them is going to take a lot more work, and that's part of what the next resolution, we're gonna be talking about, the Community Justice Center addresses. Does that help?
It helps, but it, it's, it helps, but it doesn't satisfy. In that line, I want to ask another question, if that's okay?
Please.
So I am, from where I sit, I am seeing these recommendations as informing what would potentially be policy changes that address EO 203. But I don't see anywhere in here where it speaks to the potential of policy changes. And so I was just wondering if there's a way to insert a resolve, a whereas, or something to that effect. And if we don't do it now, you know, just giving people a heads up that I would bring language for the legislature floor. Because, you know, for some of these, it doesn't matter what we do if they aren't concrete policy changes behind them. We can recruit all we want to recruit, a diverse workforce, whatever it is that says in here, identify curriculum, but if we're not implementing what we, what, what trainings people get properly, we're gonna still be at ground zero.
Okay, certainly if you have language to propose, we would hear it on the 30th, if not today.
Okay. Thank you.
But I, I, I think the policy implications of what we're trying to do are, are implicit. They're certainly in there, that we cannot go forward without developing clear policy, but...
Sorry, they're not implicit to me.
Okay.
Or I want them to be explicit.
All right, well, if you have language, happy to, happy to hear it.
I will bring that language on the 30th.
Yeah, I guess I have a sort of process question. So, and maybe nobody can really answer this, but so what if, you know, next week we end up voting on this? We take out that whole recommendation about the SWAT, and we just do something entirely different, but the city votes for something else, and they're like, "Yeah, let's repurpose it to Dewar." You know, I mean, how, how is that gonna work? I guess.
We're going to try to align our resolution with the city. If, and this is my view, if we don't get all the way there, we still submit our, our plan, and they submit theirs. As close as they can be, all the better, but if they don't entirely align, that's the way it's gonna end up. We certainly would be better off if they, if the language did align right along the way.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Deborah?
You're muted, Deborah.
I don't think 203 requires us to file a joint plan. We volunteered for that. All it requires is that the county files a plan and the city files a plan, and if they don't match, so be it.
Yeah. Ideally, it'd be great if they did, but we're, we're not tied to that. Yeah. Martha?
Thank you. I was wondering if there's, at some point, maybe it's now, maybe it's another time, I'm, I'm interested in hearing, I guess, from Jason. Like, let's say we pass this, what do we do first, second, third? Like, who's in? It looks like the first thing is to hire the CJC personnel. Like, who does that? Is that, is there a joint task force of city and Like, who does that? Is that, is there a joint task force of city and county folks? How do you see the whole thing rolling out?
I think, I think the first question would, would be to get together with the city. And when I say the county and the city, I mean, I think it's the sheriff, our county administration, the city, city administration, and, and city IPD and talk about, you know, kind of put a, fill together a timeline of things, first being, how do we staff the CJC? How do we go about that process? Layout some of those steps, and then probably see what things can start initially that may be able to kick off, who, what other stakeholders need to be involved in certain recommendations. And that can, can move forward, I think, on a slower path until you get the staff in place to be able to, to be able to really move forward some of the, some of the initiatives. But, you know, I think you want to make sure the key stakeholders are part of anywhere, you know, from, from, you know, interviewing to consensus on hiring, because this is someone that has to, these are people, these are folks have to work with, everyone involved in the process, particularly from the city and county. And then I think what we would do is probably try to identify a timeline in the first few weeks, and then identify some clear steps after that.
So I heard you say county administration, Sheriff's Office, city administration, IPD. Do you see council and the legislature involved?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have to be involved with respect to approving, you know, when recommendations come into play. I mean, I think regular updates to the, to the Public Safety Committee when that happens. From our perspective, I don't know what the equivalent is on the city side of things. So I think that's how we would keep informed of the process. And I would envision this as a monthly update at the minimum of the Public Safety Committee meeting, and probably at the legislative meeting, at least for the first few months, as we start to move those things forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Deanna's got her hand up.
I just, we just also just like to, as we talk about what we're going to do next, I think we have to center community again, and specifically communities of color as we talk about this. The reason why I was going to say this is I know that I'm a, I'm the best bureaucrat. I get in there with government just like with the rest of us, right? This is what I'm trained in. This is my career. This is my passion. However, at the end of the day, we're here to serve the people. And I agree with Mike's comment in that they're all of our community. And so with that, I'm not a respecter of person. But that means to me is black folks, white folks, indigenous folks, our Asians, our Asian sister brothers, we can't forget those folks, you know? And so we have to make sure specifically people of color, when we start this process, that we bring them to the center of the discussion. As we do the process design, as we, as we refine these recommendations, we have to make sure we continue to hear with the fine-tuned ear what it is that we're trying to do. And so I just wanted to raise that up as we talked about this, because I know we have lots of stakeholders listening, listening, but we are also in a place of privilege here. We're talking about the folks here who have had 10, 15 incidents with law enforcement. And I'm not talking about, or, or justice involved. And so I don't want to leave them out as we talk about what we're going to do next. I think one of the first things we do as we talk about the Community Justice Center and launching those things is going back in deep, because we're trying to build trust. I'm going back in for those folks who didn't want to talk to us originally, because they didn't trust what we're going to do. And so I just wanted to continue to center people of color. And you're going to hear me say this every single time we say this, because two years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, Executive Order 203 will still be the same. And so as long as we stay focused on that and what we're trying to do, that doesn't mean we're not going to do other things along the way. But I just wanted just to bring that back as a part of what we're saying, and that we're going to make sure that community is at the heart of this conversation. So that's my little.
Yeah. Which, well, I, I think that's a useful segue. We should really move into the second resolution as quickly as we can. I know I see some, some more hands up. But I would like to continue on to really talk about what does this mean and how do we make it mean something? But let's see, Leslyn and then Henry.
Rich, you can ignore my hand, because I was about to say exactly what Deanna said in response to Jason, that we need to be in a community, one of the stakeholders that we bring this back to for full consideration, in particular, to the community of color. Thank you.
All right, Henry?
Yes, I know that you were talking about getting us the, the feedback from the, from the draft plan. When do you anticipate getting us that feedback?
Well, we just got more feedback today. We didn't know, Martha asked a good question a couple of days ago. We had no idea that all those legislative emails were coming to you all. So, and as a new employee, so we have some feedback that we've already compiled. What we've tried to do is work with our academic and research group, because to maintain the process integrity, we tried to treat this data the same as we received, treated other input. And so we don't have that yet. And by the way, I'm not calling out anybody in the legislative office, because they're doing their jobs. We just weren't aware. And so, but we can give you what we've had that's come through, that's come through, like, the online portal. And we're, we should be receiving some the next day or so. But also, on the flip side of that, another gap is that we also don't know what was sent to common counsel, because you, you folks here at the legislature, those folks at the common council, you're getting quite a few emails. But what we have is the apparatus set up for general community feedback, and we're happy to share that with you. And so it should be in the next day or so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Martha, but please, let's move on.
Yeah, thanks. Before we leave this, and number one, I want to say I see that, that Deanna hasn't slowed down how she talks since she came up here from Wichita. So the.
Yeah, yes, she has. I could understand her.
All right, so.
That's because you're listening faster, not slower. That's why.
So in other words, this, this sounds like a broader task force than, than just internal county and city people would actually develop the next, the next set of proposals, the next set of plans. Is that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've talked about the, and this is a, I mean, this is a discussion to be had, doesn't need to be settled now, but there may be a value to having a cross-section or a task force or an advisory committee that is, you know, a cross-section of the community that with folks that have participated, that may be a good, a good support system for, for the CJC as they move forward. Again, that decision, I think we mentioned that in the recommendations. It doesn't, you need to be determined right now, but would probably be a good, a good way of keeping folks engaged that have participated and, and they can continue to stay engaged.
Thank you.
Okay. If I can move us on to the second resolution, this is entitled Document ID 9999, A Resolution Establishing the Community Justice Center in Collaboration Between Tompkins County and the City of Ithaca. Could I get a?
Rich?
Yeah.
Rich, we need to vote on the other resolution first.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Okay, as amended. I would like to call the vote on the first resolution. Thank you, Kathy. That, that's important. Let me call the roll. Dave?
Yes.
Hey, Mike? Mike's not answering.
Next on the committee.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry. I keep thinking he's still on Public Safety. Henry?
No.
Okay, Shawna?
Yes.
Glenn?
No.
And the chair votes yes. So I believe the resolution passes and will go on to the full legislature. And now I'd like to introduce Resolution 9999, A Resolution Establishing the Community Justice Center in Collaboration Between Tompkins County and the City of Ithaca. And could I get a motion to put that on before the committee?
I still move.
Thank you, Shawna. Glenn, seconds. And if I may, I'd just like to talk for a moment about the process involved here, that what we have just passed is a resolution consisting of a series of undertakings that we have deemed our plan, that we will submit to New York State in satisfaction of Executive Order 203. This is a separate resolution to discuss how do we begin implementing our plan. I had originally thought we would push, push this off until our April Public Safety Meeting, but in meeting with the city and having a lot of discussion about it, we determined it was really important to send the message that we are proceeding with implementation, and that there won't be a gap. That what this is about is how do we start making this real? And addressing the questions I think that Leslyn was getting to on, how do we make sure that our policies line up with what we're intending to do here? The Community Justice Center is a key step in that implementation process. I'd also say that there's been some discussion about the language in the resolution on whether this Community Justice Center would have management responsibility over any element of our criminal justice system. And I don't believe that's really what was intended. It's an oversight and data analysis function, but not a management function. And Jason, maybe you want to speak to that a little bit?
No, that's right, Rich. It's not a management function. It's not meant to oversee any department or agency, or, or it's intended to manage and facilitate, organize, coordinate the, the discussions around, and moving forward, the discussions around, around the recommendations in this report, or whatever is adopted by, by the county and the city. So it is not intended. And I think the first draft that came out, there was a word or two in there that inside, that, that suggested that that's not the case. There's no oversight here. There's no intention to do that. It is a support function to moving forward the recommendations and, and being able to coordinate. And in all, all these recommendations, there's more than two or four departments or agencies involved in it. So it's a, it's a, it's a full-time focus on the legwork around making these recommendations come to fruition.
Okay, and Jason, since this was drafted, you've come out with financial estimates. And if we could plug in a number in the bottom of the resolve there on page one, for that the Director of Finance is hereby authorized to appropriate from the 2021 Contingent Fund a total of?
So I think just to be, I think the original recommendation had about 248 or 249,000 as the amount for these, for the supporting just the CJC. There, and it would be split in two, from the city and the county. There is one additional component for $19,000 that is a project management tool that is also an internal project management tool, but also an external community engagement tool that can monitor projects as well as receive feedback from projects. This is a, I think, a basis, I think this is a tool that's very valuable, at least for this project alone, but probably for more projects in the county. Considering it's low cost, I think it's value, it's a valuable asset to this. So what it is, is splitting this cost. It's a, it's a $268,000 cost estimate, with the county's portion being 144,000, 144,380. Yes.
All right, would the addition of that language, or that number into the resolution be considered friendly by the mover and seconder? Okay, thank you, Shawna. Okay, any questions or comments? Dan, you got, you got your first hand up. Go ahead.
Thanks. Is it the intention that the Community Justice Center is to be a permanent institution? Or is it got a limited shelf life of implementation of these recommendations?
I don't know that I have an answer to that question right now, Dan. I think initially it is intended to assist in furthering these recommendations. I think the question longer term is if the major purpose of this group is to support, support equity in policing and support these recommendations. And depending on how things go over the next year to two years, it's very possible this could be something that can turn into a greater opportunity in the county and the city to promote equity and other services we provide. So I think right now it's focused on this initial, this initial task of working with the reimagining public safety plan. But to say that it, it may take on other life in the future is, is, is something to be determined. That's why this is not a target request.
Okay, Deanna, do you have something to add to that?
To add to that, one of the things is we realize you can't solve these issues in a nine-month timeframe. One of the things that I think we have to hit head on after this is that we're looking at the mental health component. We're looking at some of the, the assessed services. By the way, I'm not calling out departments. I'm just talking about health and human services components is what I mean. So nobody, don't, don't email me. So with that being said, we need to be looking at those things, and we have several things like the sequential mapping report. We have other community and nonprofit information that we receive that we need to look into further. And so when we reimagine safety, we're looking at the unhoused population. We're looking at poverty. We're looking at health and human services. So how do we think about that broadly? Executive Order 203 gave us a laser-focused thing to think about. But as a part of this, if we really truly reimagine safety, we should be thinking about those things. And so I always tell Jason all the time, a true budget is an equity-based budget. And so what does that mean? That means that we should always be using the equity lens as we think about these, and that's, that, that's respective of all folks. And so I know that we don't know the answer to those things, but we really won't have completed our jobs or done what we really were charged to do until we get to some of those other spaces. And so as we think about the Community Justice Center, and I'm going to slow down, I think it's going to be really important as we think about those, some of those things. And by the way, Glenn, you have the best slide.
So in summary, Jason and Deanna, certainly it's going to be probably repeated in the 2022 budget. We could expect that.
I would think so.
Yeah, Martha?
Thank you. I'm slipping back between this and the, the resolution. So that question of oversight, that's on line 27 in the document and packet page 14. And you know what? I can't, I know we traded messages about that, in particular, that phrase. So I don't know if that should be adjusted, and I honestly can't remember. I think we had the word coordinate. Maybe. Was it to, to coordinate the operation of the policing systems? Was that the?
I, I think it was, and that would be a useful amendment, I believe, for clarity.
So I, I'm not on the committee, but I would suggest that. Then the other question I have is, so this, basically, this looks not to come back to the legislature with a plan or with, with an outline with more of a, of a document that describes what CJC would be and who does it and who operate, how it operates. And it just moves the money from the contingent fund. Usually we, we do have that kind of a step, where something is outlined, but the details aren't clear. We haven't come back to the legislature for approval before it, money gets pulled out of the contingent fund. And so I would just, again, I'm not on the committee, I would just, but I would just toss that out there for consideration.
Okay. All right. Henry?
Yes. I wonder about, I know that, that people are energized, want to get this started. But something that's sent at home, as yesterday to your question, Rich, was whether the state had any funding for this reimagining process. And she hinted that it would. And so I'm wondering why we're rushing into this. We don't know what's going to happen with the report once we give to the governor, whether there's any funding from, from their office, from the state for this process.
I think if we can get funding, we would certainly chase it. And Jason or Deanna, I would assume that would be your position as well. Shouldn't stop us from moving forward with trying to make this work happen.
I would add, I would say that, I would add to that, Rich. Yes, I think there, there probably, well, I would hope that this, that the, that the state is going to put up some funding to support communities as they take on these initiatives. I don't think it stops us from moving forward. I would also say I don't think there's going to be a shortage of, of initiatives, at least from this community, and where we could seek additional funding. So I, I, I don't know that there's a reason to slow it down and frankly, investing in the now and having opportunity to recoup that funding through, through other opportunities is always going to be there.
Okay. All right. Did you have more, Henry?
Yeah, also, is it, is it my, my recollection that you wanted some people of color to be, to be in the CJC?
I think that's our intent, yes.
But they have to take the civil service exam, though, right?
No, I don't think the director would be a civil service. It would not be a competitive position.
Oh, I thought, I thought on that, on that board, I'd asked, and you said it was a civil service position.
It's a civil service position, but it's not a competitive civil service position. All, all, all of our positions are civil service. They're just not necessarily competitive. Meaning you don't have to take a test.
Oh, okay. So no one would have to take a test for the entire CJC?
The director would not have to take the test. The, the data program or the data analyst may have to. It depends.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you.
Mike Sigler, do you have your hand up?
Sorry, yeah, I do. I'm sorry. I had to switch phones. My question, I guess, and if this has already been answered, I'm sorry. My question is, I've read a lot about this, and it seems like the word oversight has come in a number of times. I mean, is that how this is envisioned, this CJC, is that it's going to have oversight and some kind of say over the Sheriff's Department, and some kind of say over the Ithaca Police Department? That's where I'm kind of getting lost with what the purpose of this, this group kind of is.
Yeah. And perhaps now would be the time to ask a committee member to if you're willing to propose line 27, changing the word oversight to coordinate. Could I get a motion on that if Dave moves? Do I get a second? Henry seconds? Okay. Discussion on the amendment? Leslyn, do you want to talk to the amendment? Are you talking about something else? Martha, did you have something on the amendment?
Yeah. Yeah, it just that that's not English. You have to say right now it says provide oversight of the operation. Would you just say coordinate the operation?
Or coordination?
Provide coordination of the operation?
Yes.
Provide coordination. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, sounds good.
Anything further? Be ready to vote on that amendment? If I can call the roll, Dave?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Okay. Right. And let's see, getting back, Leslyn.
Thank you, Rich. Do we have confirmation that the City of Ithaca is supporting this or is doing this? Because my understanding is that the city is endorsing adopting the recommendations, but not necessarily endorsing the plan as we have in our previous resolution. So this is one of the recommendations. And do we have confirmation that the City of Ithaca is on board with this?
I believe they're proceeding with a parallel resolution to do this criminal justice or Community Justice Center. But Jason, maybe you have an update on that?
Yes, that's my last understanding, but is that they're they're doing a similar resolution transferring the funds. They're supporting, I'm sorry, putting up the, you know, supporting this this funding, matching funds.
Okay. Kathy? Did you have more?
Leslyn, did you want to finish?
I I guess I'm done.
Oh, I'm sorry, Leslyn.
I am.
All right. Hazardous zoom.
I just want to add that I just want to add that the Budget Committee needs to act on this resolution. And I think we had targeted it for April 6, but I'm, after hearing this discussion, so legislature want to act on this March 30?
We do. So it sounds like we're going to need a special meeting in the Budget Committee, Deborah. Didn't even think about that.
Yeah, neither did I. But there's so many things to think about, Rich. It's easy to forget one. If that's okay with Kathy, we can schedule it before the meeting.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, thanks, Kathy.
Sure.
Rich, did you vote on that?
Vote on which?
The last the last vote, the amendment. I don't think you did.
Oh, thank you. If I didn't, I I would support that amendment. So I would say yes. I believe that change was unanimous. Did we call the roll on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that would make it unanimous.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Okay, I think, Mike, you're up.
Hi, my question is, who would this, who would the CJC report to? Would it report to the sheriff, the DA? Would it be a direct report to the legislature? Because that's kind of how my vote would hinge on, on who that this person reports to.
I believe it would be within county administration.
We would we would support it, obviously. And I think the regular updates and reporting to the Public Safety Committee would be an important piece of this.
Yeah.
I guess then my question is, why? Like, I don't understand why it would be put under administration, considering the DA is elected and the sheriff is elected. I would think, considering that's the person that's those two elected officials are the ones who need to coordinate the most. I would think that they would have more operational say than than the county administrator.
Well, we also have probation, social services, assigned counsel, mental health. There's a lot of coordination. Plus, the cross coordination with the city. So I don't know, we can we can certainly talk about that. But let's see, Leslyn, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Rich. I am leading a little bit towards where Henry is in terms of this resolution. I understand the need to move forward, and we're trying to, but it seems like there needs to be a little bit more information fleshing out even community involvement and conversation around this particular recommendation before we move forward with it. I mean, one of the things that the community was expecting is that, okay, here are the recommendations. And we'll be back to talk about about them, you know, once we submit our plan. So I'm a little concerned about trying to move way too quickly with this without some of the questions like Mike Sigler just asked being fully addressed. Or at least have a better sense of it.
You make a good point, Leslyn, that we are really under some time constraints here, and we've had to move faster than we typically would. If the committee was willing, we could certainly entertain a or an amendment to add the provision that it would come back to the legislature before money comes out of contingent fund. If somebody on the committee wishes to make that amendment, we could discuss it. Glenn? Moves? Henry seconds? All right, so we have that amendment on the floor. Discussion on the amendment. Martha, is that what you wanted to speak to?
Yeah, that's actually what I was trying to figure out where it went with the wordsmithing. So I'm looking at the resolution, and it would be probably a new second resolved. So you've got resolved that the county administrator is directed to enter into negotiations. But I think there needs to be a step where now not sure where the community comes in. Maybe it's before this part, but certainly the legislature has to approve the plan before finance appropriates money. So you know, and it, you know, it's already 10 after 9, 10 after 5, maybe if this is going to have to come back to come to budget capital personnel, maybe we should take time and try to
We could certainly allow it to be wordsmithed there.
What? Maybe what we should do is is take some time and trade some language among ourselves and BCP can can approve it before the legislature meeting.
Or perhaps we should, I don't know, maybe we should have a joint meeting or something and just put this one off till the next legislature, the next legislature meeting.
Yeah, maybe we should table this.
I don't think it indicates any slowdown or lack of commitment.
Yeah, and we're trying to proceed in concert with the city. So there is some impetus to bring this resolution forward on the 30. What I would propose is that we add some language to the last resolved on page 20 of the agenda. Just indicating that the county administrator shall seek further approval before drawing funds from the contingent fund.
But you've got the second resolve saying that the Director of Finance moves the money. I mean, I think what you do is something like
You need more wordsmithing.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we understand the intent of what we want to do, that we push this over to the Budget Committee to get the words right with the understanding of everybody here that that's what we're going to do. It's a fairly ministerial process, right? Of how Jason gets money and the Finance Director gets money.
Right, but the point is this, this has Jason. I mean, now, I love Jason. I trust Jason, but this says we send him off to negotiate, he decides whatever, and we pay for it.
I think I think what I'm hearing is you want to, you want to have another step in this before any money spent, anybody's hired, that type of thing. I'd be happy to work with with Rich and Martha, Deborah, whoever offline in preparation of the next Budget Capital Personnel Committee meeting, if you want to do that before the March 30.
And I think that we should try to build in the community voice in here, as Deanna and Leslyn have said, to figure out how that works into.
I think that certainly will be part of the actual development of the Community Justice Center itself. But yes, okay, Deborah?
Yeah, I'm starting to feel like there are too many things that that need to be adjusted and massaged in this process to have it happen in a BCP meeting that's a half an hour before our meeting on the 30. I'm just, I understand that we want to march in step with the city, but I'm just hearing too many people having too many questions. And some of this stuff really, Rich, ought to be decided by Public Safety, not BCP.
Well, I think the
Just says, okay, spend the money. But I'm hearing questions about what we're spending the money on and how the long-term, the process is going to work. And I don't think you want BCP deciding that.
No, I think that's true. Yeah. But I think that the Public Safety Committee needs to trust county administration to some extent on setting up this center. And pretty extensive negotiations have happened with the city. Jason has shared a lot of information, whether it's really gotten through to everybody or not, on what this would look like, the positions, the cost.
Let's consider something else. What if you put this setting up the CJC undertaking in the first in the first resolution that's part of the plan? So we've committed, no, wait, we've committed to do that. And if the city wants to commit to do that as well, that's just fine. But this might be something that we would want to consider in tandem with with the common council committees that are in charge of this, you know, sort of like when we had the joint meeting about the co-location. But I'm just trying to figure out how we got this thing framed and and fleshed out in a piece of paper that gives us some kind of firm direction that meets the needs of everyone who's spoken about, well, what about this and what about that?
Okay, Dave?
I got to agree with Deborah. I think right now we're being asked to throw money at a dark hole. We don't really know what's there. I think we need to figure out what's there. And I really think it should be a joint meeting between the city and the county. Since it's being jointly paid for, make sure everybody knows where everybody stands, because I could see that turning into a real mess. And that's, I just think that's the best way to go go forward. So I agree, put it in the first resolution. Say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to do this. We're going to look at doing this and try to figure it out. And leave it at that for today.
Speaking of wordsmithing, I'm thinking about the challenges of trying to just put it in the first resolution. But anyway, Henry, go ahead.
Yes, I move that we table this into the next Public Safety meeting.
All right, I guess I'd like to hear from Jason's opinion on that. What impact would that have with the city negotiations?
I don't know. I mean, I think your question is, is, I think it's a valid question about ensuring you're making the right appropriation of funds. I think it's also a balance to say that you know, to not take action right away or to put resources towards it may be frowned upon by the community as not being taken this seriously. I think we can talk to the city, you know, be happy to sit down with the city. And Rich, maybe you and I can do it together to understand where they're at with things. I mean, I think if I'm understanding you correctly, if I'm hearing the legislature correctly, is you want this developed a little bit more before putting the dollars behind it. Totally understand. So let's let's try to put language in there that, you know, keeps this path and this process moving forward. And if it means, you know, not committing money right away, okay, but let's maybe articulate what that, you know, the expectation is with turnaround in this in the resolution, if you are going to adopt it. That's what I'm kind of getting from the sense from everyone. If that's the direction you want us to go, we'll we'll get on it and we'll we'll meet with the city and we'll start to figure out what that looks like.
Yeah. I believe there's some real merit in us setting a course here and sending a message to the public that we mean it. This is important. What we could do is remove the second resolved, the financial one, and leave in that that we will set it up. But we're going to consult with the city and negotiate with the city to get the parameters of what it looks like and what it's going to cost. And you could accomplish that by just removing the second where resolved.
Well, it's more
Yeah, Henry?
It's more than just the cost. It's like Deb Dietrich posted in the chat, whether it's independent AUC, whether it's under the county administration, and how is the community going to be involved? We may think the community be involved significantly, but the city may say, no, they don't want the community.
By removing the second resolved, you've allowed that there will be negotiation on all of that.
I think it'd be better if it was explicit, but
Okay, Leslyn?
I think Henry mostly said what it is that I wanted to 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 say. I don't think the community is going to be that upset if this is delayed a month. I think we really need to take the time to involve as many stakeholders as possible in talking through this, because we may think it's only 200 and something dollars. Well, when you hear from the community, what are some of the expectations or from law enforcement or others? What are some of the expectations from this? It may end up being a whole lot more. So it's more than just money. And I just want to emphasize, please, let's not do this in a hurry. I'm sure the city won't mind waiting either on it. You know, to do it properly. I guess that's where I am.
Okay, Shawna?
Yeah, I agree with Leslyn and Henry. I just don't think this is ready for primetime, and I am definitely going to support this. I mean, I've already mentioned I am willing to invest the funding to make sure that we we do a better job here. But I want to be proud of what we're voting on, and this just seems so, so vague. So once we nail down, you know, what we're getting out of this and and what it looks like, I'm really going to be on board with this.
Okay, Martha?
Well, I think if there's a if there's an urgency about getting this done by March 30, honestly, we could run BCP the same as this with a committee, the whole, and most of the you know, Deborah, Rich, and I, and Glenn, and Mike Lane, that's BCP, right? I mean, five of us are on that committee. But I think if there's an urgency to get this done by March 30, I don't think that's impossible. But I do think there's more substance that needs to really be fleshed out that, you know, where where it's, this looks like it's simply county administration and the city government are figuring out what what CJC is. And that's certainly not the flavor I get out of the report that we're from, you know, hearing Leslyn talk about it, for example. So I don't think that's impossible to do by next Thursday, but you know.
I think that stuff's within BCP's purview.
All right. Well, it sounds like there's hesitancy to move forward. And I also note that we're going to lose one of our committee members in 10 minutes. So I'd like to bring this to resolution one way or the other. Henry, you you had a proposal to table. Do you want to make that as a motion?
Yes, I make it as a motion, move the table this until the next meet, next Public Safety meeting.
Is Kathy?
Rich, we have a motion on the table from Glenn Maury, seconded by Henry. Does, do you want that motion to be withdrawn?
I'm sorry, what's that motion?
Well, it was talking about adding a new resolved to authorize the county administrator to enter into negotiations. There was no clear language added, but there was a motion made.
Okay. Okay.
I withdraw that motion. I withdraw that.
And Glenn, Glenn Morey.
Yes. Okay. So that's withdrawn. We have a motion to table. And Glenn, were you seconding that?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion on tabling? It does sound like that's the sense of the legislature that will, will put this off with the clear intention that we, we intend to do this. We just want more detail on how we're going to do it. Okay. Let me call the roll. Dave?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Shauna?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. So we will, we will get to enjoy this far more in April at our Public Safety Committee meeting. And hopefully we'll have far more at that point. Before we go, it looks like, Martha, did you have something else?
So that sounds like BCP does not have to meet on a special meeting?
No, does not. I guess I would just like to make a couple of comments closing that this is a difficult process. There's a whole lot of stuff to think about. And I appreciate the patience of everybody here in taking turns and hearing each other out. It's certainly much more difficult on Zoom. But the resolution that we've passed and will go to the full legislature on March 30th is a meaningful resolution. It sounds like we're going to have a lot more vibrant discussion at that time. And we'll see where it all goes. But I, I wanted to thank everybody for taking part. Deborah and then Leslyn.
Yeah. And I want to thank you, Rich. I don't get to attend very many meetings that you chair, but you've done a nice job of guiding us through a really difficult set of subjects. So thanks.
Thank you. Leslyn?
Thank you, Rich, and thank you, everyone. I just want to close by reminding everyone is between now and the 30th, when we take up this resolution, to take a look again at what the recommendations are that we are proposing and take a look at them with the lens of how is this advancing the cause of dismantling systemic racism in our policies and practices, not just around policing, but around public safety in general. It is very important that we, that we do that. Otherwise, we continue to have the conversations that don't center the people who were supposed to be making these changes work for. So I want to encourage you to please, please do that before the 30th, when each of these recommendations, so that we can move forward with a good conscience that this is the real work that we're doing. Dismantling systemic racism is hard. Thank you, Rich, for saying this is hard work. And it doesn't mean that we don't care about, you know, others. We don't care about people who are not historically oppressed. We do. But we have to make some real hard choices to balance that level of equity. So again, I'm just encouraging you to please look at these again through those lens as we come to a vote on the 30th. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslyn. Henry?
Yes. And following Leslyn's words, I would say, look at, look at the appendix two. Look at the information from the, from the focus groups and the other interviews. And then look at, look at the report after that. I found it very helpful to basically focus on those, on, on that information, which is in the appendix, which appears, no, it doesn't appear in the report. But again, it's very, it's very interesting to see what people, what people said. And those are the oversampled populations.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Last word? We ready to step away four minutes early?
See?
All that time.
Yeah, all that time.
We'll see you all soon. Thanks.
Bye.